We will move on to our 6.8, 10:30 a.m. item. Discussion and possible direction to extend the temporary emergency warming shelter in North Lakeport and to develop an interim shelter crisis plan. Supervisor Sabatier.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Oh, yes, right. Supervisor Sabatier and Green, as soon as... Yep, he's out. Thank you.
I would like to ask if our COC, our vice chair, is with us? If she can come up and sit on the chair?
I'm going to come up.
Thank you very much. And Supervisor Green, I started off the first conversation for cannabis. We have both our names on this one. Would you like to start this one off, since this is in your district?
Thank you. Yes, I'm very proud that our current temporary emergency warming shelter is in my district and has been successfully providing services to well over 100 unhoused individuals at this point. And I think people here will be able to speak to just the positive beneficial impacts it has had, not just on the people who have obtained shelter, but people in our communities who kind of suffer from some of the adverse consequences that come with having homeless populations being unsheltered in our communities. We're coming up toward the end of the original letting of the contract for the emergency warming shelter that was done in January. That was done accompanied by a resolution declaring a shelter urgency. We're all learning this as we go. The state law that allows us to create that resolution, any number of other state laws that really put the idea that we need to move forward and craft permanent solutions toward addressing our homeless populations. It's just a very complicated thing. So first things first, thanks so much to behavioral health staff, Lake County Continuum of Care, all our partner agencies that provided input into this first warming shelter contract and have provided constructive criticisms and kudos as this emergency operation has proceeded. What's before you to do is basically the first step, and that would be extending, if possible, the current iteration of this emergency warming shelter. It is going to be warmer outside, so I don't want people to get hung up with the idea that our warming shelter is tied to the thermometer as we look forward. State law that applies on this has a pretty broad palette of terminology for interim housing options that fall somewhere between an emergency shelter and a permanent low-barrier navigation center, I think is the preferred term there. But since we did declare an interim shelter, since we did declare a shelter emergency in January, that did trigger a requirement for us to kind of come up with what are you doing now and to report to the legislative agencies that kind of track this issue, what we're doing here. Without belaboring the point, in the staff memo, you'll see there's basically three recommended actions there. The most basic one is, do we find enough value in the emergency warming shelter that we can extend that contract, should extend that contract, to continue operations to the extent possible under that contract? And then a couple of other actions, kind of look forward to the future. What's next? You know, we're probably reaching the maximum shelf life for this emergency resolution. We're probably years away from the practical consideration and construction of permanent facilities to shelter our unhoused individuals and provide them navigation services. So what are we going to do in that awkward phase in the middle? So there's also a couple of requested actions in here that would give direction to staff to start kicking the tires on that. You know, what if we have to end the sunset, the emergency warming shelter contract? What can we do in the meantime to bootstrap what are called interim sheltering options? And that can be any number of terms, bridge housing, I've heard of rapid rehousing, and I'll defer to staff on all the goodies that are available under HHAP and other funding programs for those interim shelter options. And so one of the proposed actions would be ask the space use committee to see if we can continue using the former juvenile hall property beyond the sunset of this initial contract and whether it would be appropriate to look at creating, basically Shelter 2.0 and create an interim shelter operation out there. And then also, we want to highlight that we already do have a plan in partnership with the city of Lakeport, who's here today. We have both tag teamed on an earmark request to Congressman Thompson that would give us some preliminary money to design permanent facilities. So I've probably flogged this horribly, but we're in the middle of what I think has been a really useful, valuable thing, this interim, this urgency warming shelter at the former juvenile hall facility. I think that has provided us proof of concept that we may be able to extend at that same property some form of interim sheltering operations, and I would like us to commit as a county and a staff to look into that. But I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul. I do want to point out that we do have a longer-term vision, and we are reaching out to Congressman Thompson for help on that. And I'll leave it at that. And Supervisor Sabatier, to pick up any pieces that I left.
Okay. Before I get started, I want to make sure and introduce Kimberly Guerra. She is... Actually, I don't even know your position at Redwood Community Services.
Program manager.
You are the program manager. She is our vice chair for Continuum of Care. I know we had a meeting yesterday with approval to move forward with the extension. I don't know if she wants to speak on that conversation or what we're looking for.
Certainly, yeah. Kimberly Guerra, Redwood Community Services, Vice Chair of Lake County Continuum of Care. We did have a special meeting held yesterday around 4:00 p.m. in which the executive committee and then the public came together to discuss the potential of extending a contract for the current emergency warming shelter. There were many discussions about what to do in the interim. We reviewed budgets, and I do understand that we had discussed the idea that if we were able to extend this emergency shelter, it would be for only the next 90 days. And during that 90-day time, we would be working on developing a very robust RFP, Request for Funding, so that we can ensure that there are specific guidelines and safeguards in place, which includes auditing protocols. But we did also decide as a committee that should we extend this 90-day contract with Sunrise Special Services, that we will be requesting that any change to the budget that exceeds 10% in any line item would prompt a budget modification request that would need to go through the Continuum of Care and then the county. And so we did vote on that. It did pass, and so we are bringing that information here today in hopes that we can extend the shelter, at least for the next 90 days, while we develop a plan and develop an RFP for an interim shelter program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I will say that we have found some inconsistencies in comparison to what we anticipated. I can describe that some of those inconsistencies can definitely be due to the ramping up. They opened up earlier than anticipated and eventually got to the staffing levels that they needed to have, which made for some difficulties early on. And then, of course, there was the snowstorm where, working with OES, they were now open 24 hours a day rather than 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. So there was definitely some changes that occurred during that, hence why we're looking at a more robust safeguards for the next RFP. However, over 100 individuals have been to the warming shelter. Some of those individuals are now working through Behavioral Health Services for extra help. Some of those individuals have been found housing, and we want to make sure that we don't shut down that momentum where eventually those people will just not have a place to go and will go right back where they started, which makes us lose everything that we've worked for. And I will share my screen here for probably the most important part of the conversation, which is money. And so currently, H hap round two, the county has $35,701.50. We used $153,600 already to pay for the first 90-days contract that we approved. So that's what's left in the county level for H hap round two. There's still $310,000 from the COC H hap round three that's available, and our 90-day contract, as I just stated, was for $153,000. So already just those two, and I am absolutely cherry picking what's available, but those two are available to help fulfill the payment of the $153,600 to extend it at 90 days, at 90 days more. And then just for the second part of the conversation, if the chair doesn't mind my going into this, in the future, and actually, some of this we've already received, we all sat here and reviewed the H hap round four plan, as well as the HHIP plan that we submitted to the state. This was actually one of those, I believe it's the HHIP, was the one that the governor stopped and challenged us and said, "We need to do better," because the change in homelessness, I think, was averaging about 2%. And I could be wrong. It could have been the H hap round four that the governor stopped. But we submitted these things. It went through the Board of Supervisors. We anticipate $419,000 from H hap round four for the COC over the course of two years. Expected first payment will be in six months. H hap round four for the county, $393,000 over the course of two years. Expected first payment in six months. And then the HHIP for the COC, we're looking at over, it looks about $3 million, and we've already received the first $563,000. And so the idea of how do we move forward? How do we look at something more permanent? The money is coming in, and that was our anticipation in submitting those plans to the state for these funds, was to look at permanent housing. And so in front of the board are a few requests. One is to say, yes, we're interested in continuing the warming shelter. By April 25th, I believe that's the correct date, we plan to bring back a contract extension. Today is not an approval of the 90-day extension. It's the approval of continuing to do these things in our facility. In order to get the approval, we also need to direct staff to go to the space committee to say, ask them if they still want to allow the use of that facility for the warming shelter. And then the third one is an ask, even though it's already mandated, by doing the declaration of the shelter crisis, automatically by July 1st, we need to submit to the state a shelter plan. But we feel that that shelter plan will help us have a blueprint for what does the plan look like to get to permanent sheltering. And from that plan, at that point, we can come back and decide what's our timeframe and what's our next steps. And so those are the three asks that we are asking today, and again, with the COC's approval as well to wanting to move forward and utilizing the funds that are available.
So I just have a question. I know you intend to go to the space committee, but has there been any discussion with probation as it's their building?
No. That's part of the space committee conversation.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if...
No, no, no. Good point, good point. I know that they've been very kind and have said yes all the time to allow us to continue, and to be honest, I had not thought of that, and so I appreciate the comment.
And I can't remember in the agreement, is there rent being paid or is it waived? Is that in...
I know that they are paying for utilities. I do not believe that there is a rent, but they are paying for the entire service being rendered. It looks like somebody knows better than me.
No.
No rent. No rent, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I know there was questions about zoning for the use there, and that's covered under the emergency temporarily.
Yes, and that's why also we are asking to wait for the shelter plan, because maybe a rezone is not the appropriate first step we need to take with a shelter plan. We'll know exactly what's first, what's second, and maybe we'll be looking at a different facility at that point. I don't know.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
No, you know, I just think the long-term plan, obviously, is going to have to, you know, we want to make sure public comment and everything gets out there. I know when we first started using this facility during the pandemic, we did have folks that come from that community that definitely wanted to be able to have their voice heard, you know, of what would be going in there potentially for long-term for the county. So obviously, on all three of these, I think, for me, I definitely support it. Obviously, putting more work on our departments is always a challenge, but I think the space committee, we can meet that timeframe within the 90 days, you know, or to get back to it. Would the space committee have to meet before the April 25th? Is that what the request is?
That would be the request.
Okay, all right. But overall, support it. It's much needed in the communities. I think there's going to be other conversations coming down from the state looking for places like this. I know myself and vice chair and Chair Pysko are going to be asked by Center of Wire to go to a meeting, I think, in July, and we'll make sure to attend that and see what information comes out of there. So, yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward with all the requests.
Okay, we'll open it up for public input. If we have anybody in the chambers, you can come up, state your name, and speak for three minutes.
Come on up to him.
John Moss, I'm in favor of keeping the shelter open, but I do want to know, why were the children moved out of that facility in the first place? And then probation department did take over and run offices there? And I just would like to know the history of why it was not acceptable as a juvenile hall.
Okay. I think we're going to stay on topic today, so if you want to come up, thank you.
My name's Suzy Glover, and I work at the warming shelter. I'm going to read a letter from a friend of mine, Catherine Waters. She's a senior who's disabled in Lucerne.
You can lower the microphone if you need to.
Okay. To whom it may concern, about 45 years ago, when I became a nurse, there was no question about the patients we took care of and the fact that life was precious and part of our nursing oath as registered nurses. There was no concern over how much money a patient had, or their politics, or their color, or their weight, or anything else regarding the quality of care we were supposed to give to our patients. Keeping the patient's life as a priority was a basic human right and respect. A warming center absolutely saves lives, and now that I am a disabled senior citizen, during the past winter, I knew I could possibly be faced with death not having heat while I was in a well-insulated home during the three-day power outage across the lake. At that time, I went to knowing there were other human beings who had no shelter at all and very little likelihood of survival. Warming shelters should be considered sacred because they save lives in house. Someone can deny funding to literally save human lives, I find questionable with all the grants given from both state and federal levels and the fact we can put jars in every single business within Lake County for small donations that add up quite quickly. People who realize that we are talking about fellow human beings' very lives, all the way from childhood to the quite elderly, understand the importance of a warming center. I have concerns about the people who are making this decision and not working to truly find ways to be able to fund this, because life is a priority and under our constitutional rights and has been always, and has always been, a top priority in making monetary decisions to giving help to others. With more and more children and families becoming homeless, they definitely need to be a priority. Please consider and work on this in a way that will benefit all the citizens in Lake County and make us proud. And since life is a constitutional right, there must be federal funds and grant money for this without devastating the economy of this country. Sincerely, from the heart of someone concerned regarding human life, for my best, my best wishes and hopes, Catherine Waters.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, and I want, oh, I am Annie Barnes Keys, co-founder of Sunrise Special Services, which is administrator of this grant. I want to take this opportunity to first say thank you, because we could not be where we are today had it not been for all the partnerships of the county agencies from behavioral health, law enforcement, hospitals, social services, and of course, the COC, who has provided the team that's making the shelter with comments, and we, just like any new project, we grow. And so I'm grateful for the growth and the hand-holding and the comments and the visits that we have had in these 90 days. I also want to take this opportunity, because Sunrise is a very small nonprofit, very organic, began here in Lake County, that what we really do in health, housing, social services, is rooted in working as an advocate for voices that are not always heard. And this project is certainly one of those, where we do work with a promotorious model from the bottom up, and it's taking those that we intend to serve, and they are the ones, together, we empower and change and grow in the communities. So thank you for this opportunity, and we hope the next 90 days will even be more, the next phase of this, of working with total person that we know, that what the shelter has done is has been a safe, welcoming place for those unhoused. They provided opportunity, environment to work towards a quality of life. And most important is the integrated approach of healthcare, law enforcement, and unhoused advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kurt McKelvey. I'd just like to ask the board to clarify each Supervisor Crandall's reason for recusal on this agenda item?
That's up to him, not us.
It's his choice.
Do you have any knowledge as to the specific reason?
It's his choice. We all choose to recuse ourselves if we feel it's important.
Okay. Thank you.
Yvonne Cox, Director of the Emergency Warming Shelter. It has been challenging, and I see now the importance of this warming shelter. Always knew we needed it, but now, after working and doing it, I see the need is far greater than I ever imagined. We have literally changed lives, saved lives. We have helped people get into housing. We have hired people. We have gotten people jobs outside. We have gotten into place resources, social services, social security, Dr. Donda. We have the support of the community, and that's what really makes this work. At first, as you guys know, the low barrier, I was questioning it as to, you know, is this really a good idea? Is this safe? But after working it, I've had, up to date, five different residents surrender their drugs, get into programs, and are now in our NA classes every week. It has made profound changes in people's lives, and to stop the momentum now would be ludicrous. To get everybody trained and everybody up to par... When we first started this, I kind of had a mutiny. We had a person that had some really bad morals, that was hired to work in the position, and it didn't work out. We had to relieve her. Well, when she walked out, two other people walked out with her. So now I was stuck with nobody. Out of survival skills, I kept the momentum going. I did the cooking. I did the cleaning. When it was questioned about how I had so many hours, if you would have told me I was going to do that, I would have told you I couldn't. I can't even imagine, but survival skills kicked in. I saw the need. I saw the people. They needed a place to be safe, to be fed, to be warm, to get back on track so they could navigate, so they can get back into population, back into their own lives. So with that being said, the importance of this is beyond the scope of words. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
My name's Brad Rasmussen. I'm the Chief of Police in the City of Lakeport. I've got a lot of experience working with the homeless in our city. In fact, it's my understanding that somewhere around up to 20 people a night are out of my city are currently using this facility. First of all, I do agree with the short-term 90-day extension to keep something available for the progress that's been made, but I also agree that a more thorough review and RFP is necessary to make sure that we make the right decision going forward, because something more permanent and more extensive, in my opinion, is really needed to address the problem in this county. I just want to give a couple of examples. Going back to Elijah House, when that was available, you know, we had some great success in the homeless we were working with that had behavioral health and drug and alcohol addiction issues. And by getting them into something like this, we were able to finally convince them to go to their mental health appointments, go to drug and alcohol counseling, and get off the drugs and get more stabilized. In one example, I can cite, going back when that was there, we had an individual that was causing upwards of 100 police calls a year. Well, once we got him into Elijah House and all those appointments, he was stabilized. But then that facility closed, and that person was now back on the street. Fortunately, this has now come about, and they're able to use that. So I think it's important that we not lose progress from where we're at and continue to work on a better, more permanent solution and make sure that the right decision is made on that when the time comes. Thank you.
Chief, before you leave, just a follow-up question. I know you spoke during our first meeting last Friday, and was wondering if you can give us, what's the impact on your police activity or your calls that you have by having these facilities?
Thank you for bringing that up. What I can say is that a significant portion of our calls in the city of Lakeport deal with the unhoused, particularly those that have drug and alcohol and/or mental health conditions at the same time. When, going back to Elijah House, we were seeing a decrease in those issues once we had some sort of housing, although it was just temporary. And then, once that closed, those calls again increased, and we had more problems on the street. Now that this facility has been open for the last two months, I can say that I'm starting to see some relief for some of the calls that we're dealing with, because, and this is not perfect. It's an overnight shelter. We really need more. But it's something to get people off the street at night and kind of set them up for the next day, and I can say that I have seen where we're starting to see a decline again because of that. So that's kind of why I mentioned that if we lose progress and this goes away, then all those problems are immediately back, and we have to again start over at ground zero or at the beginning again. And I don't really think we should keep doing that. I think we need to keep something going, do the right work to make sure that the right decision is made on what is the best solution for a more permanent situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Alicia Adams, and I work for Lake Family Resource Center. My current assignment is with the Lakeport Police Department, and I do outreach to our homeless community. I've been doing this for about 17 months. I could say that when you're working with people in the field, on the street, when they're in crisis, if they haven't had a meal, if they haven't had warmth, there's really nothing else that's on their brain. Having a facility like this allows people to then engage with services and programs that are being offered to them. I've seen a significant improvement with the folks that I work with, with there is availability of food, clothing, shelter, hygiene, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Kevin Ingram, City of Lakeport, City Manager. First, just a big thank you to Supervisors Green and Sabatier for bringing this item forward. I just kind of reiterate what other folks have said. I mean, I think this is a true learning experience for everybody. I don't think there's anybody who's going to say that everything has moved perfect, but I just want to reiterate, it's been said by Ms. Cox, also Chief Raspisson and Elise in our response, we are in a better position today than we were... in our response, we are in a better position today than we were before. We've seen this pattern. I know there were issues in regards to the way that the Elijah facility was running, but at the same time, we did see a marked change, taking a step back when that facility did close. So I think, you know, moving forward, I like the plan that's been, that's been put forward here. I don't want to get involved in the politics of the county Space Committee, but I do think that this facility does offer a lot of tools and resources that are necessary. The City of Lakeport is certainly committed to taking a bigger role in this process. I think that's evidenced through our partnership already in the congressional ask with Congressman Thompson's. It is our goal to move forward with a kind of a full-service, low-navigation center in the City of Lakeport, where I think it makes more sense, where those closer to transportation-related facilities, other pieces and things like that. But in all honesty, that's going to take some time, and in the meantime, I think this is a great option moving forward. I'd like to see it move out of the emergency piece. I think, you know, coming back every 90 days is a, you know, a big effort on everybody's part when these resources can be, time resources, that is, can be utilized more in these efforts. We're learning, I mean, this has not been the domain of the cities historically, but certainly understanding that we have a greater part to play as this mental health and homelessness crisis is, it's not just here, it's everywhere. The mayor and I will be attending the joint session that CSAC and Cal Cities is hosting tomorrow, certainly getting out there and making sure. I heard Supervisor Simon talk about a future meeting in July with Senator McGuire. I think it's very important that we continue to have a unified front with our state representation, that we need more resources. This is a bigger problem than I think anybody can see. So is this step the answer to everything? No, but it is definitely putting us on a better trajectory than we would be without it, and we want to definitely play our part as a city. We're benefiting from this, and we know that we need to be a stronger partner moving forward. Lastly, I'll just end with, I think from our learning perspective with Elisa and the crisis response worker that we've had in place for close to two years now, we're making very great connections, but going back to that Maslow hierarchy of needs sort of things, if these, you know, these number-one housing pieces aren't being met, then we can't get further. This is offering an opportunity to break through that roadblock and get people plugged into other services.
Thank you.
I heard my bell.
Gong.
Can I add one more comment?
Of course.
Thank you. I also just wanted to add, and I think it speaks to everybody who's participated here today, the reason why this came as a special meeting to the COC was because the consensus in our general meeting on Thursday, April 6th, was that there was a desperate need and desire to see this continue on, and that is why, that is what prompted the special meeting that we took the vote on. So I know that there's plenty of people here that are advocating for that as well, but to, you know, we have a rather large, general COC membership, and there was quite, quite a lot of interest about maintaining these services as well.
Okay. Are you giving public input?
Yes, I just have one quick question. So just to kind of reiterate the original question as to the recusal, certain officials, including City Council members, planning commissioners, and members of the Board of Supervisors, have a mandated manner in which they must disqualify from decisions made at a public meeting, including closed-session decisions, and must publicly identify a conflict of interest and leave the room before the item is discussed. Secret recusals are not allowed under California law. So again, what is the reason for the recusal?
Well, I guess he can tell you when he comes back in.
Thank you.
We do have two hands in Zoom.
Okay.
Carrie Manning?
Go ahead, Carrie, you can state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Carrie Manning from Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I supervise our peer support centers, and this is near, this is my heart song, working in housing. I was unhoused myself a couple of decades ago for about three or four years, and I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said. You know, at our peer support centers, we've been offering referrals for treatment services, we have life skills groups, and empowering the guests that come from the shelter by assigning chores. We have clothing closets, we have lunch there every day, they have snacks, we have group stuff that people have been doing, and I really feel like the warming shelter is a stepping stone in our housing continuum of care. And I feel that this is going to help bridge the gap that we've all talked about this morning, like the transitional housing, the more permanent housing. This is a great opportunity, and I think lots of other doors are going to be opened by this. So thank you.
Thank you. And who else do we have?
The other hand went down.
Okay, so there's no other public input, we can bring it back to the board, and this item is to provide direction?
I'll just add one thing, there's been a lot of talks about the conversations that are occurring. I know both myself and Chair Pysko will be in Sacramento this week for the combined meeting that is happening there, and happy to hear that Lakeport will be there. I was pretty much assuming that you would be, but I think that's going to be a healthy conversation, because it's the first time that it's, the conversation is created with, we're together in this. This is not a county issue, this is not a city issue, this is an all-of-us issue. So I hope that good things come out of there, and CSAC just did open up a new grant portal on their website so that you can type in what you're looking to get accomplished, and it helps you find some of the grants for the projects that you would like to get done. And so trying to make things as simple as possible for local jurisdictions to navigate through the needs, because the needs are very different depending on where you are. But looking forward to consensus today so that we can move these things forward, come back on April 25th with an extension contract, and asking the Space Committee and requesting for the shelter plan to come back to us at a time where it can be reviewed by the COC and the board before July 1st.
Okay, do we have consensus on all three items?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then staff has their direction, we can bring in Supervisor Crandall, he can answer the question, and then we can close out this item. There was a question about your reason for recusal.
Yeah.
And so just if you could state that for the public, and then we can close this item.
Not a problem. Yes, I recuse myself because my wife is consistently attacked by a certain faction of people, due to the fact that they just dislike me. So because she's on the continuum of care, I don't feel comfortable making a vote to incur more negative attention to my wife. You know, it's fine this faction continues to attack me, and I've expected that since I took seat, but I don't think it's fair that she's consistently attacked, so that's the reason why I recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item.